Okay, it's four o'clock. Welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council work session for Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. First up on our agenda, this afternoon is an update from Medco. We have Nick Glue with us.
Good afternoon, council members. Mayor, thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here in this virtual setting with you all. We'd like to give these updates quarterly. I think with the crazy year it's been, we may have missed one, but I'm here today to just provide you with an overview of kind of what we're seeing. Just big picture from a statistics standpoint, and then we'll talk briefly about a couple, a couple of projects going on and wrap up hopefully in less than 10 minutes. So this first chart that we're going to be looking at here is just to give you an update on where we're at as far as really some dashboard numbers that our board and our team tracks every month. So our board met this morning and this is a sample of some of the charts that are always in their packets. And we like to really right now compare some of these numbers to where we were at a year ago, and some of these we like to back up even further to see where we were pre pandemic as far back as January of 2020. This first chart is showing the total number of employed people in our MSA. And our MSA, many of you would know includes Lynn, Jones, and Benton Counties. So this is just looking at three counties, our MSA. You can see our total employment was 138,000 as of the end of July, up just slightly from where we were in July of 2020 of 137,400. So you can see we've definitely been lower than that between last July and now, but we're headed in the right direction as far as total employment is concerned. We are always watching closely other labor numbers. This next chart is another way that we measure just the number of available workers. This one actually grabs seven counties. So this is the total number of both employed and unemployed people. So essentially, these are people that want to work. And you can see July compared to a year ago, we are still down quite a bit compared to a year ago. And this is a number. This is a trend that as we visit with companies and we talk with business leaders, we've got to continue to see this chart to continue to go up, but it is trending in a positive direction. As you can see, especially since just earlier this year in March. Next chart. We do regularly watch unemployment rate. And so on this next chart, you can see I've highlighted the orange and the blue. So blue is at a very micro level. The city of Marion, orange is the county level, and then gray behind there is the state. I believe the state just came out with their August number. I think it stayed at, I believe it's 4.1%. So you can see, if you look just at our community, we are about in line with the state number. At the county level, just a little bit higher than that. But again, if you rewind a year ago, we've, we've come a long ways from an unemployment rate standpoint. Again, to be quite honest, we don't bring this unemployment rate typically down all that much lower. We could maybe move another percent down, but we're, we're always going to have 3%, 3.5% unemployed with just sometimes the characteristics and way we, way we measure unemployment rate. This next chart, we, we do track very closely, and that's labor force participation rate. So if people that are able and of working age, how many of them are actually engaged and participating in, in the workforce? You can see we have rebounded a little bit from a year ago. But the interesting thing is that in January of 2020, our labor force participation rate in the state of Iowa was 71%. So when we start asking these questions, like where did all the workers go? Well, we know that there's, you know, a couple percentage points of our available labor force that they're just not even trying. They're, they're on the sideline for, for various reasons. And we're always talking about what some of those reasons might be, but regardless of what they are. In Iowa, it's a numbers game. We just need more people, as many people as possible to be a part of that participating labor force. So those are just some updates on some of those workforce stats that we track on a regular basis. This is just a chart from our project pipeline, just to show you a little bit of some trends as far as how we look at active prospects. So projects that we are, we deem as viable, we're having conversations with those companies. And then the green is total, total projects under construction. Once they're done, they then move, move to blue. But you can see, we still feel good about the number of potential investments in our community, at least the ones that we are actively talking with, and we, we see no signs of alarm as far as perhaps what 2022 may look like when it comes to new investment in our community. This next chart is a stat that actually comes from your building department team. This is just a measure of the combined value of new permits that are pulled. And yeah, it does get a little messy because we essentially have four years of data layered on here. So if you just look at the bars, the orange is representing the value of new commercial and industrial starts in that given month. And the blue is the total value of all new residential starts. And so you can see we, we lumped those together, and then the various lines are measuring what that value was in, in the prior years. So I think it's kind of interesting to see that, yeah, obviously some of our, you can see the general trend lines, you know, with each year, they, they're up and down in various levels. But I, I would say it's a strong year for us, especially on the commercial industrial side. It feels good. We were at 22 million at the end of August. We've still got a couple of large projects that I think will come online and hit this report by the end of the year. So we continue to be encouraged by the numbers that, that show up here. So just to talk a little bit specifically about a few projects, one thing we are very proud of, and I want to thank our entire team for the hard work that they've put in in, and into this, we, we all touch this in different ways, and that's the recertification of the Marion Enterprise Center as a certified site. Some of you might not know, but the Marion Enterprise Center was actually the first certified site in the state of Iowa when they first rolled out this program six or seven years ago. We get the privilege of having to recertify the site every five years, which basically means you update environmental studies, endangered species studies. You, you check all the boxes that potential companies may be interested in so that you lessen the risk to companies that are considering an investment in your park. So we went through that process. We got the state stamp of approval and we are now recertified. But the next slide, well, I wanted to add a little bit of context as to really what's going on in the park right now. You guys will recall that you approved the development agreement with Medco Holding Company a meeting cycle or two ago to help support construction of Enterprise Drive up to Marion Airport Road and a few other things that will be included in that project. The main driver of all of that is because of this next slide, these two buildings that are being proposed. Not just proposed, but we have now, let you back up one slide there, Terrell. These two buildings, we have sold lots, so we, we no longer own those top two lots on the east side. We have sold those to two different development groups, and these are representations of those buildings that we expect to see to get underway here in the next six to 12 months. 12 months is a longer period of time that I would like to see construction start after we sell a piece of ground. But these projects getting out of the ground face the same challenges that every project in our marketplace is currently facing. Long lead times in building packages, long lead times, and you know, you name it, every amount of material that goes into these buildings is, is, is challenged to, to secure right now. So that's, these are the products that are coming. We're working just as hard as we can. Some of you may recall a, a project that was announced in Eastern Iowa a couple of weeks ago. It's a company that landed in Dyersville, Iowa. It was a manufacturer of refrigerating commercial grade refrigerators. So you walk into Casey's Come and Go Quick Star, and you see these big coolers. Well, there was a company here in town that we hosted that manufactures those and landed in Dyersville because they were a community that had a building like this that was up and ready to go. They could move a lot faster. The company didn't want to go through the building process, so we lose. So that's why we are laser focused in trying to get more of this building inventory to market because it's a product that we are missing right now in our community. So next slide. This is hot off the press. Some of you may not have seen this or read this necessarily, but yesterday the state of Iowa announced projects that will receive workforce housing tax credits. So you guys have taken action on both of these projects. The one on the left is Green Park. This is the YMCA redevelopment. And the one on the right is representing the redevelopment of the Hames Homes site on the west side of town. Each of these projects were really kind of on hold pending the outcome of, of those awards. Both of them were granted the maximum $1 million tax credit that are critical financing gap pieces for these projects. So I talked with project representatives with Green Park just late yesterday. They anticipate trying to get that project rolling right away. I've not been able to be in touch with the other project, but I know that even the closing of that property was contingent on, on that award. So we are really excited that two out of our three workforce housing tax credit applications were funded. So housing was a big topic in the legislative session this past year. And the legislature improved a significant amount of new money for this program. And then the governor a couple of weeks ago added another 20 million in ARPA funds, I believe to that pot. And so it, it's great that we were able to get the two projects that we did because quite frankly, we felt that geographically they would be very intentional in spreading it out across the state. So we're, we're really pleased to, to let you know about those awards. And then I just want to wrap up with an update on our Marion Community Build project. Just a few photos here. Again, to remind you, we just finished 338 Avenue. You can go ahead and go through the next couple of pictures here, Terrell. It's a great project. Kids had a great experience. We wrapped it up nicely. Hopefully some of you were able to attend the open house we had. The project has since closed and we have a very happy buyer. It worked out really well. The project came in kind of from a budget standpoint where we needed it to, and it positioned us well to be able to really launch into the next project. So let me just give you a summary of how this project landed. So you can see the dollar amount that we acquired that property for back in 2020. Generally, the amount of money we put into it, our total investment there. And then even after, based on income, we developed a program where we would provide down payment assistance and closing cost assistance to the buyer based on how they qualified. And we worked with EC cog to be able to do that. So we provided an $8,000 down payment assistance grant to the buyer. And in addition, we partnered with the Housing Fund for Lynn County, who also awarded us and the buyer an additional a $10,000 grant. So there's another 10,000 that's kind of an in and out for us. That was a benefit to this particular buyer. The good news is we exited this project with a pretty nice gain. So we were, our team did a spectacular job. Dennis Fleege, the teacher, Dustin Kern, our project manager, and we, we came out of this one well. And now the next slide. And then we bought this. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess that was anticlimactic. Just a reminder to you, you'll recall that over a year ago, the city invested in this program. So this is how, this is the seed money that we use to do this. So we use some of the low to moderate income TIF dollars. That was $100,000 investment. And then Medco, we invested just over $110,000 into the program as well. So that, that's the money that we're using to kind of the ins and outs to, to keep this program going. Now, now to the next slide. So we acquired this property. It's at 2095 Third Avenue, just southeast here of City Hall. And if we get through this and only give back the profits from the previous house, I'll, I'll probably be a happy camper. So this is our next project with the school district. We closed on it about two weeks ago. Go ahead and go to the next slide. You can see it's a property that's had a decent amount of deferred maintenance. Has a garage here on the property that actually no longer sits there. The students have already tore it down. And we're beginning to kind of develop our strategy and our plans for this particular piece of property. It was a home that was built over 100 years ago. And I'm not sure anything was straight when it was built 100 years ago, and we're trying to now make it a piece of property that people today expect. So this, this will get a whole new kitchen. There's a fair amount of structural things on the inside of the house. And in, in some way, we're going to build a new garage. There's still some bigger ideas we're floating around that you'll be learning about soon. But I just wanted to give you a preview of the project that we're going to dive into here in the new school year. And then also invite you to this. On Thursday, we will have an open house at this property. You are all invited to attend with the media and the general public from 1:30 to two, just a quick open house and a, and a quick introduction to this next project. So again, thank you for your investment to help seed this. It's been a success so far. We'll, we'll keep our fingers crossed that we can repeat that. So that's the update I have for you. I just want to kind of look forward to when we are here to give you an update for our Q4 work. That's when we will bring back kind of the annual report on our business retention work. Brady Quinn joined our team about a year ago. He's been spending the year just listening and, and working alongside our existing industry partners here in the community. So we talked about workforce. We've learned a ton about supply chain. Despite, despite all the difficulties, I guess in the, in the, just in the, in the space of doing business today, there's a lot of good things happening. So we'll bring back to you kind of what we are hearing from our business partners during our report here as we get towards the end of the year. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions that any of you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Glue? I don't see anyone, any hands raised. So I'm sure you all know how to reach him also outside of this meeting if you have further questions. Thank you so much, Nick. Okay. Moving on with the consent agenda. The items are appearing on page one of the agenda through A5 on page two are not marked. Are there any questions on those? Okay, A6 is marked for discussion.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It is time for us to do another community survey. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to provide a brief update along with the contract that you'll be voting on on Thursday. We've used the National Community Survey and National NRC to conduct this survey for us in 2017 and again in 2019. And hope to do so again this year. The company has merged with Polco, and you might recognize that name. We've used their online tools for some of our COVID online surveying as well as our equity and inclusion efforts. So it's kind of a great merger where we can, with this contract, we get a more robust online tool that we can use in, in different ways along with the random sample survey that is mailed to residents as we've done in the past. So really, a lot of the questions are pretty standard. This is a tool that's used across the country. But we do have about one half page that is able to be customized. They are kind of transitioning to more of a hybrid model in collecting input from residents. About 1,200 paper mail, paper surveys will be mailed in addition to about 1,500 postcards that are mailed and provide an online link for residents to participate in the survey as it has in the past. Once that random sample has an opportunity to respond, the survey is opened up to all residents to capture community needs, measure performance, and really help inform our strategic planning decisions. So looking to kind of do what we've done in the past. And with the service, it also comes with a more robust dashboard. Now, we've gotten very detailed reports in the past, but it'll kind of transition to more of a dashboard where we can run reports and cross tabs of the data that is collected. So that is kind of a high level of what we hope to do working with the company at a future meeting. We hope to work pretty quickly so that this information can get out to residents and we'll have it in time to inform the budget process this year. But it's about a three month process. So we'll be back soon with the questions and ask for council's input on any specific questions. But also want to draw attention to that online tool through Polco that we can do some more specific project question surveys. You know, whether it be things that might not appear in all cities, if you will. So any questions?
So Amber, what's the target date that roll it out?
We have to update some of the materials that would be part of the mailing. Basically, this contract gets us on their work calendar. And so hopefully in the next few weeks to month, we would, we would be able to do that and then have results within about three months.
Okay, so I, I guess we can ask council members to be thinking about specific questions that they would like to see included on the survey. So when we have that discussion, we're prepared to to move that forward. So
Absolutely.
Okay, any questions for Amber? Great, great. Go ahead. And then Randy.
Thank you. So Amber, did I understand correctly, there would be a mailing, a randomized mailing going out? Soliciting responses online? Is that correct?
Yes, we work with our planning and development folks to provide the company with our, our addresses. They do a random sample. There are actually three mailings that go out, a postcard that says this is coming, the actual survey that folks can complete in the paper form and then a follow up if they have not yet completed the survey. So there are three opportunities for those folks that are selected for the random sample.
Do we advertise the online survey form through any other avenues or channels besides the mailing?
Yes. So then we do our kind of standard communication around this. We'll let people know it's coming. Depending on the timing of the next Marion messenger, we'll include information there. And then as a follow up, when the online survey is available, we'll use our social media channel, channels, press release and our, our normal outreach to expand that.
Yeah. So I, I guess here's really, I think the question with that understanding of their approach. Do they have a way to discount online responses that were received from outside of Marion? And maybe you don't know the answer to that question, and I'm just curious, you know, if, if they have that capability based on IP address screening or some other methodology.
Yes, they do screen IP addresses, and they can also provide us with a report of the result by geographic area. In the past, we've used wards as, you know, one way that we get that information, but they do have those measures in place.
That's great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Randy.
I'm going to withdraw my question because I think it's been answered. Thank you very much, and thanks for the presentation, Amber.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Amber on this? I think this is a tool that's been very useful to us in the past, and it's certainly worth the, the time and effort and the expense. So thanks, Amber.
Thank you.
Look to hear from you further.
Sounds good.
All right, A7 is not marked. Are there any questions on A7? Okay, moving on to C1 and C1.
All right. Good afternoon, Council. I believe in your package, you have the Fire Prevention Code, Chapter 164. There's nine or 10 pages there. And we're basically just going to go through each one of them with some slides on a PowerPoint. Slide number one, the business permit 105.1.1. We're actually removing that from the previous amendment because the 2021 fire code did not include it. So that is being removed. All the rest of those numbers are strictly number changes. They've added or subtracted something before or after that. So those numbers changed. 105.5.40, which is plant extraction systems, we would like to add that. So that these are all under operational permits in case we would have a CBD oil plant or something that wants to move into Marion. We'd like to be able to have a permit to regulate that. Next slide, please. These are just continuation of operational permits. Or construction permits, excuse me. Actually, I gotta head myself a little bit. Okay, so that's number one on the sheet. Number two on the, going back to the fire code is strictly a number change. And that is true of three and four as well. Okay, moving on to four, which is construction permits, which is the slide that's on the PowerPoint. Deleting from the previous amendment of battery systems and capacity energy storage systems. They added 105.6.5, which is energy storage system, which basically took over those two previous ones, which were deleting. And the rest are just number changes as well. Moving on to next page, number five and six. Those are unchanged. Sorry, not the next slide, but your next slide and your amendments, five and six. Those are unchanged from previous. Number seven is we're deleting that amendment because the fire code, the 2021 fire code actually changed to say what our amendment previously said. So we're deleting that. Whoever, the next slide now, Terrell, please. To add 112.3.1 in the place of that amendment seven, which basically deals with our fire inspection reports that says that we can send an email or other electronic means with a read receipt or other confirmation of receipt. The fire code basically says it has to be hand delivered, get a signature, and does not allow for any electronic means, but that's becoming a very popular way to send those reports. So that is what that amendment deals with. Number eight is unchanged. Or actually, number eight is adding clarification that includes both charcoal grills and propane grills. The fire code says that they cannot be used within 10 feet, but we currently have it where propane grills cannot be stored or used within 10 feet, but it did not specifically say charcoal grill. So it's really a clarification to include both sets of grills. Because quite frankly, the, particularly the apartment complexes, they just don't move them away from the buildings when they use them. And that's how we end up with burn up siding. Number nine is no change. 10 is no change. 11, they'd actually made an error in the 2018 fire code on one of their charts. So we made an amendment for that. And in 2021, they corrected it. So number 11, we are basically deleting. Number 12 is no change from previous. Terrell, you're, you're going too fast for me. Go back a couple of slides here. I'm going back and forth between the fire code and, and my PowerPoint. So 13 is no change. 14 is no change. All right, next slide, please, Terrell. 14 is we're deleting this entire amendment. We had allowed our fire lanes to go down to 12 feet several years ago. And this is a picture of the Arbers on Blair's Ferry Road, which is right at 12 feet. And the fire code basically says 20 feet for a fire lane, and we're deleting the amendment to go back to what the fire code says. 12 feet is simply not enough, particularly with our new larger ladder truck. This is simply not enough for them. So we're deleting the amendment to go back to what the fire code actually says. Number 15 and 16 on the fire code, those are unchanged. That's still an existing amendment. Number 17, go to the next slide, please. Is all we're doing is adding, is if there's a monument sign that it has to have the same building address on it. So the picture here is the abode building or the subway La Quintina building behind Come and Go, which actually has an address of 3217 Seventh Avenue. However, the building completely sits beside the, behind the Come and Go building and there's really, it's very difficult to see the address on there. So this amendment is just requesting that if they have a monument sign, it's out front of that building, that, that have an address on it as well. Number 18, 19, 20 and 21, there are no changes. 22 was a permit for mechanical refrigeration and we're deleting that because it's actually addressed in the mechanical code, so it doesn't really need to be addressed in the fire code. 23 and 24, we're requesting delete that amendment because that is also dealt with in the building code and is redundant. 25 is unchanged. 26 is unchanged. 27, go to the next slide, please. Is a definition change. There's basically a definition of what's a roof line when it deals with whether sprinklers are required on balconies. And we would like to change it to where it basically, if there's a combustible over, or combustible siding or any kind of an overhang, that a sprinkler would be required. We kind of had an issue where there was like a six inch overhang and they didn't think that's qualified as a roof line. So therefore sprinklers would not be required. We're asking that any kind of, any overhang period or any kind of combustible siding would require sprinklers. So the picture here is the Magnolia Lane fire from a couple of years ago. They basically completely destroyed that building. It started on the deck. This building would not have had a sprinkler system due to the year, year it was built, but if that building would have had a sprinkler system, the fire would have been contained in the deck and those people would not have been displaced. 28, there's an exception for utility buildings, which are kind of like storage buildings or like utility building, saying they don't have fire extinguishers as long as the visiting personnel do. We would like to delete that exception because the problem is they hire outside contractors, there's just no guarantee that those folks, when they're there, truly have an extinguisher. So we would like those facilities to still have an extinguisher. 29 is unchanged. 30, next slide, please. Is the previous years of fire alarm used to say 8 decibels for a minimum sound level for fire alarm. In 2018, they changed it to just say 15 decibels above average sound level. That, that's very vague as far as determining what an average sound level is, and the places we really struggle with that is a school gymnasium. A lot of the teachers, gym teachers are now using music and amplifiers and are talking over loudspeakers. You think of a basketball game at Lindbergh High School, what exactly is 15 decibels over ambient? Ambient sound level is pretty difficult to determine in those situations. So we would like it to go basically back to where it says a minimum of 80 or 15 above. So at least it gives them a minimum sound level, which is 80 is pretty, pretty low anyways. 31, next slide, please. Is currently any sprinkler building. The building may have to be sprinkled and it can be a multi suite building where one of the tenants may require that a fire alarm, but a fire alarm not, may not be required in another suite. We would like at least one notification unit or horn stroke to be required in the common area of each suite. The concept being is the building's on fire in the building next to you, but it's the adjoining wall, we think everybody in that strip mall should be notified that there's a potential fire. And currently, the fire code does not say that in the sprinkler building. 32, there is no change. 33 is just slightly in addition, we're deleting sub paragraph four, which deals with not allowing locks on double doors. So we've never allowed locks on single doors, but on double doors where one leaf was allowed to be locked. We're now requesting that neither one of those is able to be locked without having pan and cardboard or a single action way of opening that door. 34, next slide, please. Is just an exception dealing with dust explosions. And it basically gives an exception that if they want to classify it as an agricultural type of use, that this is an exception where they don't have to have any kind of permits or anything. It would be very unlikely to have this within a city limits of Marion anyways, but we're trying to eliminate that being used as an exception calling an agricultural building. 35 and 36 is, we're actually deleting the exception. Basically says that all the fuel has to be within view of the tenant or the worker of a gas station. A lot of them have videos, have stuff like that, but they're not watching them anyway, so we really don't see that that's feasible all the time to have that requirement and there's pretty tough to enforce. 37, 38, 39 and 40 are all unchanged. 41, we would like to delete section 3303.3.1 and change it to any violations will held to the city's fee schedule and municipal penalties. Penalties, if there are any life safety issues, a stop work order or a do not occupy maybe issued and posted. So the problem with the current way that this is worded is we have a fee schedule that takes weeks to, weeks or months to exhaust before we actually get to a municipal infraction and really doesn't give us power to say if there's a significant life safety issue that we can stop work immediately. 42 and 43 are unchanged as well. I know I went through those really, really quickly. Do you guys have any questions?
Renee does.
Okay.
Yep, thanks, thanks Mayor. I just had a question about amendment 14, where you talked about the fire lane width and going back to how it used to be. Do you have any sense of how many properties are, have the narrow one and how do we handle that in turn? Are they just grandfathered in? And then if the business were to change, would something change about that or, or we just kind of locked in with those and we're correcting going forward? How will that work?
Yeah, I am only aware of the one and yeah, I mean, we had amended it in the 2018 fire code, which is what they were built under. So yeah, they would be, that would be allowed, they would be grandfathered in.
But it's just the one in the whole city? We just have one that, that, that is in that narrow?
That is the only one that I can think of off the top of my head, yes.
Oh, good, okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yes, Your Honor. Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, just on the, on the matter of the overhangs and combustible siding. I, I was rather taken back with that picture that you, you illustrated at that town home. Is that right, would this requirement then be retroactive for any complexes like that that do not have sprinklers in the overhangs?
No, this would strictly be anything basically built under the 2021 fire code or after.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
All right, anything else?
You're muted, Mayor.
Sorry, I was muted, okay. I don't see that anyone has any other questions, so thank you very much, Sean.
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay, on to C two. Who will lead us to that discussion?
It's me, Chief Kiss Muller, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Chief.
Hey, so this is the 2080 that we entered into with Hiawatha regarding the records management system that we're, we're getting. It just kind of spells out the terms, it's $40,000 to help with that initial cost and then $8,000 a year. We put it at two years for the $8,000 payment and then it'll be picked up annually. We just thought maybe there'd be some increased cost that we wanted to keep open ended going forward on that. And just as a reminder for everybody, our cost didn't change whether Hiawatha joined us or not, so even this amount, even though it's small compared to the overall cost, is, is a little savings for the city.
Okay, yep, we've had this, the prior discussion on this, but if anyone has any further questions or needs clarifications on the actual agreement, please say so at this time. I don't see any questions, Chief, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, under parks and engineering, there are no items that are marked for a specific discussion. Are there any questions on those items? What about community development and library on page three? Any questions on those items? Okay, are there any questions on the abstention agenda? And so I'll ask Mayor Potem Atkins to handle those. Okay, there are none. Then we'll move on to the regular agenda. A one is marked for discussion. Is that ML? Or who's, who's handling this?
I can, oh, Tom, oh, okay, sorry.
Go ahead, Tom.
Oh, yeah, so as, as the council's aware, we worked with, we work a lot with EC cog and housing assistance and they made us aware of a CDBG application that we could use for down payment assistance to qualified home buyers. We started down the road in getting that application prepared, but it's a, it's a first come, first served grant process. There were others that were in line ahead of us and we got notice earlier today, actually, that the the dollars afforded to this particular program have been expended, so we will continue to watch for this grant or this program and then work towards applying to the program next year. This is a, an annual program, we've, we haven't applied for these dollars for quite some time. But we'll, we'll keep an eye on them and, and move forward with those in the, in the coming year. So this item and then there's another item that was earlier in the agenda that will, I mean, we'll just remove that from the agenda for Thursday.
Okay, so this won't be on the agenda for Thursday?
Correct.
All right, just out of curiosity, what's the, what's the average down payment? What's the size of the grant on average?
It's 2499, nine, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, would, would provide assistance for six houses.
Okay. Great, all right, any questions, even though we're removing this from the agenda, any questions? You have a question, go ahead.
Yeah, Tom or Amal do. Is there an optimum time that we should make sure we're getting our applications in? I guess, you know, do they start taking the applications at a fixed time each year so we can kind of be in, in the front end of that?
Yeah, they make it a, they make the funding available different point or at a point in the year. I don't know if it's the standard every year. This isn't a grant that we've applied for on a consistent basis, just our involvement with EC cog. I sit on the housing fund for Lynn County. So the, we were starting the conversation a few weeks back and, and even then it was questionable whether we'd be able to get a, an application in in time for the, before the, the dollars would be expended, but we, we tried to push the issue, if you notice, it's on a resolution approving a service agreement, we're setting the date for the public hearing. We asked, we actually had also walked down the road of we hadn't published it yet, but to publish the or solicit proposals for application or solicit proposals for the administration of the grant once it was received. It's just, you know, it didn't come together fast enough for us to completely respond.
Okay.
We kind of knew when we found out about it that it was gonna be a tight deadline.
Well, it seems like we're talking more about these types of programs lately and that they're more on our radar and I, I, I really appreciate that. And I, I, I assume we're still looking at some program through the art, with the ARPA funds. You know, this, this really will, these types of programs really expand our ability to serve everyone in our community and, and provide opportunities for, for, for more people and I, I just, I'm really happy to see it, to see it on our, on our radar and hopefully we'll, we'll get the application in next year and and have this program available, so.
There's actually, just, just so the council's aware, there, there are, there's actually two CDBG grant programs, one is for down payment assistance and the other's for housing rehab, right, so. So we would keep, keep the conversation going and, and apply for these next year. We'll, we'll apply for both of them next year.
Is that the same deadline for housing rehab?
Believe it is.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a, that's a really great program as we've discussed before, especially for our older housing stock and the older sections of town, to just keep up a quality quality stock of affordable housing for families. I think it's, it's really important, so. And maybe we can have further discussions when we get into our, our long term planning and those kinds of discussions, so. All right, thanks, Tom and ML. Next is under parks. We have one item that's marked for discussion, is that Seth?
Yes, council, I have here a proposal for basketball court for Prairie Hill Park. So this is a part of a larger CIP project for the development of Prairie Hill Park. We had four bids that came in for this project and we had the lowest bid being 94% of the engineer's estimate. This overall project was really was a, this is a master plan for the development of Prairie Hill. We did a master plan project in 2019 and from that project, we, we came up with a Prairie Hill Park, which consisted of a basketball court, playground, shelters, ball diamonds, and this is a part of this project. So we do have a recommendation from the park board and from staff to go with Eastern Iowa Escavating Concrete for the lump sum of $46,461 and 25 cents. This project is, the deadline for the project completion will be actually May 27th of 2022. We're hoping that we would still be able to get this done within this construction season.
Okay, questions for Seth? Okay, I don't see any questions, Seth. Thank you very much. Engineering, we have the first item marked for discussion.
Yes, Your Honor, so Thursday, we will have a public hearing regarding our traffic signal at South 31st and Highway 100. We did receive four bids for this project. They all did come in over engineer's estimate, the low being from Boomerang at $727,903.95. If you look at the detailed bid items, you can see the item that caused that was the actual signal. So steel prices are still high. We are still recommending that we move forward with this. So as you may recall, we do have a half a million dollar grant for the Traffic Safety Improvement Program. So that takes the total cost down to $228,000 and change. We're then splitting that cost with Lynn County because it's in both jurisdictions, so we're getting a, a brand new traffic signal for about $114,000 as well as churn lane improvements, so. If we were to rebid this project, I don't think that steel prices will come down that much to make much of a difference and there's a potential then that we would lose the half million dollar grant. So that's why staff is recommending that we proceed. Lynn County has concurred and so has the DOT with the bids. So it has a, a late start date of June 6th of 2022, a 70 working days and that gives them adequate time to get the signals ordered so they can install them next year and then there's liquidated damages of $1,000 per day.
So the DOT grant has a time limit on it?
It does.
Okay, questions for Mike? Yes, go ahead, Randy.
Thanks, Nick. Mike, on these here, just a quick question of clarity, I don't know if I've ever understood this, but.
Thanks, Nick, Mike, on these here, just a quick question of clarity, I don't know if I've ever understood this, but on all lights that are on Highway One Hundred, do those, does the maintenance on those fall back to the city or are those shared with Lynn County or Iowa DOT at all?
So typically, most of them, we, the city maintains, the DOT will let us put them in there. We still have to apply for permits because it's joint jurisdiction. At some point, the city will annex all that land and it'll be a hundred percent the city. As far as maintenance, Lynn County doesn't really have a traffic signal maintenance department, so it would fall back on the city to do that maintenance, we could do a 28E for that maintenance agreement. For now, the 28E that we have with them is only for the installation of the turn signal.
Okay, thank you, Mike, appreciate that.
So the, the road itself, Mike, is not in the city?
A portion, it is, a portion of it's in the county and then obviously it has DOT jurisdiction as well, they were a joint applicant on the application.
Okay, other questions for Mike? Every time I drive by there or drive through that intersection, I recognize the need for the, for the signal. Okay, thank you. Item E two is not marked for discussion, I guess that's part of the, that's the resolution, E three is marked, go ahead, Mike.
So E three is a development agreement, MOU, raise your investments for Glen Rock Farm Seventh and Eighth. So I've highlighted it there in red, so you kind of know the areas, so this is the very north end of Marion, north of the Hunter's Ridge Golf Course, a little bit west of it. With this detention basin, there's over a hundred acres that drain through it. And so other than the area that we had this summer with the no rain, it's very hard to get this dried out. So as part of the strategic planning, one of those items was to make more of our detention basins wet. And so this agreement basically allows a wet detention basin that the city will then take maintenance over.
Hey. Questions for Mike? Okay, I don't see any questions. E four is not, not marked. Any questions are on, under Community Development F one and two? Okay, moving on to the discussion regarding cities emergency response, derecho and future emergency planning. Is that Chief Deb?
Yes, it is, Your Honor.
Hi, Chief.
Hi. With the recent media releases, the council had requested actually grant. Harper had requested and asked some questions about why Marion had not conducted an AAR, an after action review as Cedar Rapids and Lynn County had. As you know, Cedar Rapids conducted an after action review of the derecho and they had a third party conduct that study. Lynn County EMA also had an after action review in which they conducted it themselves. With Marion, though, we did have an after action review. We met with all the members that were in the EOC and our emergency operations center during those two weeks or three weeks and we discussed the issues, those were recorded and as we did not have an emergency plan at this time, we were using those comments to produce an emergency plan for the city. So we did not have a formal written document at that time. There was also a question, I apologize, there was also a question on Lynn County EMA, they gave their report to the EMA Commission, they responded that they had put this report out to all of the municipalities in Lynn County as well as the emergency operations and public safety agencies throughout the county and were looking for comments on the report. No one gave comments. Mr. Harper asked why Marion had not commented and the reason for that I wanted to report to the council is that in an after action review, that is an internal document and technically we as Marion did not operate very closely with Lynn County EMA and therefore really can't comment on what they feel occurred or the actions that were taken by them were. So what usually happens after action reviews was agencies involved were not actually physically with that other agency. As we had in this situation, we had Cedar Rapids operating out of their own emergency operation center. We had Lynn County EMA operating out of Lynn County EMA for quick and as you know, Marion, we had our, we set up our own emergency operations center to try to alleviate and mitigate the issues that we had in Marion. So with that, each individual entity because they had their own emergency operations would make their own after action review. But each entity could not really comment on the other entities because they weren't out there or working with them at that time. So what usually happens in that kind of a situation and what is going to happen with Lynn County situation after derecho, the EMA Commission of which I am a member of the executive board, I'm the treasurer on that board. Once we get the report and have accepted the report, we go through the report and the members of the EMA Commission can then work with Lynn County Emergency Management, Cedar Rapids and Marion, we can work together now putting reports together and work together to provide a better plan and better ways of dealing with such disasters. So that's kind of why we didn't have one. As for our emergency response in Marion, as you know, since I became chief, I've been really pushing the city to renew our emergency plan. The one we have presently is quite eight, I guess, and we really need to put that together. So with the derecho, we are of course going to really push this forward. And in fact, during my paper performance and my job evaluation, I was tasked with the job this year of putting together the city's emergency plan. So with that, we're going to be working with FEMA and the Emergency Management Institute. The Emergency Management Institute is the national agency that provides emergency management training throughout the country. And we will be working with them, their campus is actually on the campus of the National Fire Academy. So I have already actually worked with this, with EMI before and we will be working with them again and trying to form our plan. Well, we're going to form a committee this fall. It kind of got held up with COVID and things with the meetings and everything. So and with the departure of our city manager, things have gotten a little delayed, but we plan on still forming a committee to begin the new plan, the committee will consist of council members, city department heads, nonprofits in the community, Lynn County EMA members of the public. Together that committee and we'll be looking for attendance and direction from EMI. And hopefully we'll do training and the training, emergency management training, this is something that we discussed in the Lynn County EMA Commission meeting. There is training for all of our municipalities throughout the county on how a disaster is supposed to be handled and how the Lynn County EMA master plan falls into place for each community and the unencouraged areas of the county. So we thought it would be best if we start getting that training out there. Since we're having elections in November, in case there's a change in council or anything like that, we felt maybe after the elections, it would be best to do this training with the council, but it's with the council and the city manager. And also since we're getting a new city manager, we just felt it might be better to wait till January to conduct this training. Then in February, hopefully EMI will provide even more training and then we'll start tabletop exercises, which is an annual process, it can be even more often than annually that we do these drills, so that everyone in the city that's going to be at the table during a disaster can go through a tabletop disaster and really see what roles we play and what our jobs are when that disaster hits. To make sure we're doing all we can. So that's where we're at for emergency planning, that's where we are and why we did not have a written formal after action review. And I wanted to make the council aware of that after Mr. Harper's urging. And I want to also add to that, that I really did feel, as I said before, that for, since I've become chief, I've really pushed us putting an emergency plan together and I have dreaded the day that we had a disaster without an emergency plan, a new emergency plan. And I must say that I've never been prouder of our community as I am of Marion and how we handled that disaster. We handled it better than I would have ever thought we would and we did very well and I'm very proud to say I'm with Marion and with that I will take questions.
All right, thanks, Deb, Grant has a question.
Thank you, Your Honor, Chief, I just first, first of all, want to thank you for the responsiveness to my inquiry that I had a week or so ago with the with the article that was in the Gazette. And one of the things that you and I certainly discussed is, is the you know, the passion and the importance that we have to have for having effective emergency response plans in place. If for another reason to give us a mental framework by which we respond to something that might be somewhat out of the norm. So I'm, I just want to say thank you and I also want to just applaud your efforts in having a structure that we go forward with so that we can advantage ourselves from the EMI training, have a common mindset around how to approach all hazards, conditions and to maintain that on an annual basis through whatever training, tabletops and the like that we, that we have and given the fact that our new fire station has a modified emergency operations center, I think it'll be very important to have that planning structure wrapped around that facility so we can make effective use of it, so I appreciate, again, your responsiveness to my, my inquiries here a couple of weeks ago, thanks.
Yes, sir, it was my pleasure and also in what you just said, it's very important that we do wrap the new plan around where our emergency operations center is going to be and also with the new development throughout the city, 28E agreements with different areas that we can use as shelters and things like that. Updating is, it's going to be very beneficial actually at this time.
Okay, any other questions for Chief Kerbel? All right, we'll look forward to seeing this process move ahead in a timely way so that we can get this plan together and get the training that we all need.
And I will warn you, you're all going to be playing a part, so. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions on this item, we will move on to the next item, which is an update regarding sidewalks damaged by the derecho.
Yes, Your Honor, so what we did was we went around based on the stump locations that were inventoried with the Parks Department and citizen complaints that we got through social media and through our outlets and went through and found that there were twenty nine locations with sidewalks that had been damaged with a total of sixty four panels. Now, if you recall, the city council approved resolution number two nine five one zero that had the basically half cost share based on the city's bid prices for sidewalk panels. So what we are proposing to do is send out a modified letter that we would normally send out as part of our sidewalk inspection program to those twenty nine properties using Amber to help us add the parts about the new policy that was adopted and send that out so that they can get those sidewalks on notice and repaired. They may have some issues with getting contractors now that we're starting to get into the fall. So the resolution was good for one year from the date it was adopted. Depending on contractor availability, that might be something where it comes back to city council and is extended by possibly another six months. But we'll just have to see. And so it does look like we're going to be on the hook for about three thousand dollars, depending on how many people actually apply for that cost reimbursement. I know it was recently in the paper that Cedar Rapids was going to go ahead and just do it all themselves. Our understanding of that through FEMA is that is not eligible for FEMA reimbursement. And so that is not while we are proceeding with that and it also sounded like a lot of their damage was because of the contractors that were removing it. In our case, if the contractor did damage it, we made the contractor fix those sidewalk panels.
Okay, questions for Mike on this? Yeah, I have a question for, for Tom, would it be okay to put on the agenda for Thursday, just an update on where we are with the FEMA reimbursements? I think it's been a little while since we've had that update.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, anything else from anyone? All right, that brings us to the conclusion of the work session, thank you everyone for joining us, we'll see you all on Thursday. Have a good evening.
Be careful.